I call the hybrid in-person virtual meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order. It is 7:06 PM on Monday, August 10th, 2020. I am in conference room C of the Fisher Administration Building for the first time, not by myself in a while, and happy to be joined by a lot of colleagues. We are at 12121 West North Avenue with board members participating in person and remotely via the videoconferencing platform Zoom due to active health and safety concerns associated with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic public health emergency. Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domann?
Here.
Ms. Fraley?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Ms. Newfeld?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
I'm here as well. We are going to start out with an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items this evening. Before I do, I want to make a comment last about our meeting two weeks ago. During that meeting, we had someone join us and use some profanity that we were extremely disappointed in. It's not something that is a value of the Wauwatosa School District, the community of Wauwatosa, and that we find absolutely abhorrent. So I want to apologize on behalf of the Board and on behalf of the district that that occurred, and we will continue to strive to do all the work we can around equity, diversity, and inclusion, to do everything we can to educate members of the community and students within our schools on how to be actively anti-racist in response to these types of behaviors. So, public comment. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any non-agenda item of public comment?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will move into our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none. May I have... might someone move to pass the consent... may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Some move.
Some move.
May I have a second? Mr. Meyer, are you comfortable with a second?
Yes, I am. Yes, Meyer, for a second.
Any more comments on the consent agenda? Any community comment on the consent agenda?
No, I haven't.
Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Newfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes. The consent agenda passes. We next move into a human resources action item. Approval of the new Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy Regulation Updates. Mr. Meyer, can you read this one?
It is recommended that the Board approve the new Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy Regulation Updates as reviewed at the July 27, 2020 meeting, and I so move.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Newfeld. Ida Endor, Dr. Erdl, can you do a quick high-level overview of again what this is for those who may not have been here last week, two weeks ago?
There is a policy that is changing based on Title IX. Some of the changes are that under Title IX now staff harassment and specifically sexual harassment will be under that Title IX, which it hasn't been in the past. So there would be some modifications to our current harassment policy. Some other changes are that we have to post Title IX coordinators as well as assign decision-makers to this Title IX policy. So there will be some review and looking at our current policy to make some modifications to this.
Any more discussion or questions? Any community comment or questions on this item?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah.
Ms. Newfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes. And that item passes. We are now going to move into superintendent reports. We are joined by a now alumni of Wauwatosa East High School who's going to be providing an overview and update on a research study that she did as part of her AP capstone. Dr. Erdl, any introduction for this item?
Just an opportunity for students. We talk all the time about what kind of learning takes place in our schools and are they able to actually apply their learning in a way that has an impact? And here's an opportunity for, yes, she is a graduate, but with pandemic, we were planning to do it earlier, but for her to present to a school board, to the administration, something that she's worked hard on and make it a real-life presentation. So I think this opportunity is a great one, and Ms. Sampson does an awesome job working with the kids to get them ready to do this.
Thank you. I was going to take an opportunity to introduce Antonia. Can you guys all hear me okay? So thank you, Dr. Erdl. So I am Megan Sampson. I teach AP Research. And I'm just going to quickly mention a few things about the class that Antonia went through to get her conclusions before she jumps into her presentation. And we realize, like, timing-wise, this is not ideal in terms of planning for this school year and addressing issues of equity and race in addition to the pandemic. But there is no perfect time, and so we're happy that you guys are here to listen to us. So AP Research is one-year-long class, so two semesters. And the first semester, Antonia was doing a lot of reading of existing literature in her field of interest, which for her, she was very interested in, like, multiracial and biracial studies, particularly with elementary school students. And then what she has to do is pass an institutional review board to make sure that her research is ethical, which is part of the reason why all of her participants are anonymous. She did her research in Wauwatosa, so we can't answer any questions about who or where exactly this stuff happened because of the institutional review board. And then she collects her own data and then writes this huge paper, submits it to the AP College Board, and she passed, so good job. And then her research can even be published at this point. So I'm going to let her presentation speak for itself, and she can answer any questions about the research. But if you have questions about the class that I can quickly address after, I'm happy to do that. But go ahead, and can you share your screen, Antonia, for your presentation?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I'm not sure... Oh. Sorry, I'm having a few technical...
Um... Do you want me to share it, Antonia?
On the bottom for share screen.
Yeah. Yeah, Ms. Sampson, do you mind sharing it? I'm just having a few issues.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
And then you'll just have to tell me when you want me to advance it.
Mm-hmm. Great, all right. Um, so thank you, Ms. Sampson, for introducing me. Um, yeah, so my presentation is entitled "Race Education in Wauwatosa and Multiracial Identity Development." Um, yeah, so I'll just start with a little intro about myself. Um, so my name is Antonia Arne, and as Dr. Erdl said and Ms. Sampson said, I am a recent graduate of Wauwatosa East. I graduated in 2020. And over the past year, through my AP Research class, I've spent my time researching and collecting data for a project about race education and multiracial identity development and about fostering strong positive identities in specifically multiracial elementary school students. And so today I'll be presenting an overview of the research that I did over the past year and some of its conclusions. Yeah, so, um, I'm going to sort of gloss over the whole beginning part of my presentation or of my paper. So basically, we start with by reading a whole lot of sources and creating a problem statement that is basically like, this is a problem, and I'm going, you know, justification for why we're doing this research. And if you're interested more in the background of why we can interest in this topic or why this topic is important, there is a link at the end of this presentation to my full paper. So I would recommend going and taking a look at that. But I'll start with reading my problem statement. So there is a problem... Sorry. So there's a problem with the way that elementary schools in southeastern Wisconsin address race and multiracial identity in the classroom. So despite access to teaching practices that could be put in place to support multiracial students, these children are statistically more likely to develop anxiety and depression. So perhaps a study that implements beneficial teaching practices into upper elementary school classrooms and observes the results would shed some light on how to remedy this very important issue. Yeah, so again, if you're looking for sources, you can just go and head over to my paper. Yeah, and so that, doing that preliminary research and creating that problem statement led me to my research question, which is could implementing positive multiracial education practices in elementary schools foster a stronger, more positive sense of identity in the multiracial children in southeast Wisconsin? Um, yeah, and so that research question led me to, you know, doing further research within my literature review. But before I talk about any of that or before I talk about my results, I think it's important to define some terms just for clarity. So firstly, multiracial children are just any person under the age of 18 typically in K-12 schooling who has parents who identify as two different racial groups or as being a part of two different racial groups. So it's literally multiracial. Um, and then next is race education. So race education is just anything from curriculums to class discussions to lessons to anything that has to do with talking about race, talking about the history of race, talking about racism, anything like that. And it can be implemented into any subject. So, you know, talking about, you know, biologically what race is or talking about, you know, the societal impact of race in social studies. You know, it really spans across a lot of different educational areas. Next would be identity development. So identity development is the complex process by which we come to understand ourselves within the greater context of societal demands. Um, so that would be that this typically happens most, like, intensely when you're a teenager. I don't know if you've ever heard of the Erickson's Identity versus Role Confusion Phase. That's where most identity development occurs. So that's when you're taking all of the different parts of yourself, like your family, your friends, what you like to do, your gender identity, your race, all of those things, and you're coming to understand yourself as a whole person. And this is very, very important for things like mental health, stability, you know, security, things like that. Um, yeah. And so obviously, like, race is a huge, huge, huge part of your identity and your identity development. Yeah, and then so leading into the strong sense of identity. So having a strong sense of identity is basically just having a strong sense of who you are and really knowing that you are secure and steady in your environment. So, you know, you're happy, you're happy in your environment. You feel like you have a support system and you feel like you know who you are. And there's been a lot of research showing that having a strong sense of identity leads to much better mental health outcomes in the future. So this is particularly important for teenagers and, you know, young people. And then lastly is positive multiracial education practices. So positive multiracial education practices are education practices that just aim to foster strong positive identities in multiracial students specifically. So that would be, some examples would be like bringing in multiracial speakers to talk to students in classrooms, reading books that, you know, show the multiracial experience, talking about the multiracial experience in history lessons. For example, Frederick Douglass was multiracial, and I didn't know that until a couple months ago. But we talked about Frederick Douglass, you know, in middle school and high school and history, and in English a little bit. And, you know, I didn't even know that he was multiracial. So, you know, just acknowledging that people are multiracial, you know, would be an element to a positive multiracial education pact to this. Um, yeah, so next would be my hypothesis. So after defining all of those things in my paper and talking a little bit more of the history of that and, you know, using some more evidence and, you know, dryer stuff, let me to my hypothesis, which is multiracial elementary school students in Wauwatosa will be positively impacted by adding positive race education practices to their existing race education curriculum. Yeah, so that comes to the end of my, like, introduction section. Again, I go into a lot more detail in my paper. So if you want to go take a look at that, there is a link at the end of the presentation. So the way that I collected data was in two phases. In phase one, I did an interview with two fifth-grade teachers. They did teach the same group of students. One was the normal, like, was a normal teacher, and then the other one was a student teacher, but she was in her last year of teaching. So she had had quite a bit of interaction with the students at this point. And I did interviews with the fifth-grade students in their class. And it will note that all of the interviews were done in person right before the school closures. I actually did the student interviews the Thursday before school closed. And then, so after doing phase one of the interviews, I went into an analysis of the second step curriculum as the teachers had cited the second step curriculum as primary race education curriculum in this classroom. Yep, and after completing all of that, I moved on to phase two, at which I distributed a survey to Wauwatosa East High School students and I distributed a survey to a population of local adults, the majority of which did have children in the district. Yeah, and so here I just have some influential sources. So the sources detailed on the bottom are ones that led to, that's like justification for why I did the methods that I did, and these two links on the top. So the final bibliography, that's just a link to the bibliography from my entire paper. It's literally just like the APA cited sources. But that annotated bibliography I actually made back in November. And it has quite a few sources, but I also have, like, a summary of those sources and why they're important, how they apply to this topic and things like that. So if any of you are interested in further reading about multiraciality or anything like that, the annotated bibliography is a pretty good summary of just some of the things that I read. Yeah, and so after, you know, doing all the methods, I reported my results. So here are just some of the participants. So as I said, I had two fifth-grade teachers and I interviewed seven fifth-grade students. You can see the breakdown of those students right there. And then for the survey, I ended up having 110 student responses and 68 adult responses. If you're more interested in the breakdown of those students, I have some graphics in my paper that leave that out in a little bit more detail. And then for the content analysis, I created a rubric from my synthesized research and used it to evaluate the race education curriculum at the school. And at the end of my paper, in one of the appendices, there is the full rubric that I used to evaluate the curriculum. Yeah, and so for the teacher interviews, I do have all of those transcribed in my paper. There's a big table that has all of the questions that I asked and then their direct quotes. I listened to it and then transcribed that. And so if you're interested in seeing exactly what they had to say and exactly what I asked them, that's in my paper. But here are just the two main points that I thought were most interesting and most influential. So first thing, both the teachers assumed that the lessons about personal identity laid out in second step would apply to the students' racial identities and that the second step lessons would impact their thoughts about race more than the history lessons. And I found this very, very interesting. Just anecdotally, as a student, I went through second step, and I don't remember hearing about race at all. We never talked about race. And so I thought it was very interesting that their number-one thing that they were citing as their race education was second step. And I think that speaks a little bit to, you know, how in touch the teachers are with, you know, how race is talked about in their school. As they did, after I, you know, asked them a little bit more and asked them specifically about history, they were saying that the students were talking about race within history, but it was the sort of feeling was that the history lesson where they talk about race wouldn't actually impact their identities, which I think is just, there's a real gap there, and there's sort of a lack of self-awareness when it comes to what they're actually teaching their students about race. Um, yeah, and then so the second thing that I found was that throughout the interview, the teachers were viewing discomfort around talking about race in the classroom. So the teachers were very adamant that the environment that they fostered in their classroom was very safe, very open, very accepting, and I think, you know, that's awesome, that's great. But when I asked them about maybe talking about race with a different group of students, they expressed some discomfort, you know, some awkwardness, some sort of feeling like they would not feel comfortable talking to a group of students that they didn't know about race, which I thought was very interesting. And it will note that the environment in the whole interview, whenever race was brought up, was quite tense and quite awkward. And, you know, obviously, I can't cite that directly in a paper. So I qualify all of that as discomfort in my paper, and I do use some justification later on.
Antonia, is your internet acting up? All right, we have you again.
Hello?
Yeah, so you can start on the results for the student interviews.
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, so you left off with the results for the student interviews. You can go start on this slide.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, yeah, so the results for the student interviews.
Might help label your video and just have audio if you turn your...
Disable my video, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Your internet.
Okay, um, yeah. So I guess I'll just move on to the results of the student interviews. So here are just some quotes that I found to be very interesting and very influential from the interviews. Again, everything, all of the transcribed interviews are laid out in the paper. And I have all of my questions there and all of their actual answers laid out in there as well. Um, but here were just some that I found to be very interesting. The one that I really want to draw all of your attention to is the one in the top corner. It says, quote, "Sometimes, I guess, when I had to go in a group with somebody and I didn't know them, they were African-American, I got scared because they were all African-American." And this was in a response to a question that was, "Do you ever feel uncomfortable when you're at school?" Um, and I just found this to be very interesting, not only because of the literal direct quote, but also because after she had stated this, a couple minutes later, she came to me and she was like, "I was lying." When I answered that, she was like pointing on my paper to where I had written down her answer, and she was saying, "That was a lie, that was a lie." Um, and I don't know if that was, if she was actually lying, but listening back, it sounds like she had recognized from maybe my tone or just my manner that I had been a little bit taken aback by this answer. And she had seen that this was maybe not something that she was supposed to say. Or I put that in quotes. And so she was trying to sort of take that back and say like, "No, no, I didn't get scared because they were all, like, you know..." Um, and what this speaks to is discomfort around talking about race in the classroom. So it speaks to this child feeling like she's not allowed to express her feelings, she's not allowed to say that she was scared because she, you know, it's not something that you're allowed to talk about in the classroom. And I don't know, I don't want to say that this participant was racist. I absolutely do not think that. But what I do think is that she did not feel comfortable expressing her opinions, and because of that, nobody in her life was able to tell her, was able to explain to her, you know, was able to help her work through this and help her work through and, you know, come to a more accepting place and a more actively anti-racist place because, you know, she's just in this place of like, shut it down, shut it down, shut it down, and all that's going to do is lead to her festering and this thought is going to grow. And her relationship around race is not going to be improved at all in school, and it's probably only going to get worse. So I just found that response to be very telling of the environment around race in this classroom. And so we can move on to the next one. Thank you. Yeah, and then just some key points from the student interviews. So the multiracial students revealed a lack of awareness around multiraciality as well as just discomfort around talking about race. And again, when I'm saying discomfort, I do define it in my paper. I'm describing body language, just manner of speaking, things like that. And so many of the multiracial students were not able to correctly define what it meant to be multiracial. Like, I would say, you know, so can you define what it means to be multiracial? And they would, you know, they would not know. And I found that to be very interesting, specifically from the multiracial students, that they didn't have an understanding of multiraciality. And also just this general discomfort around race was prevalent within that group. And then during the interviews, also, the mono-racial student showed extreme discomfort while talking about race and racial issues at school, as well as just general lack of awareness. So it was pretty consistent through both groups. And so overall, extreme discomfort and lack of knowledge around discussing multiraciality was prevalent in five out of the seven student interviews. Yeah, so that concludes the interview portion. And so then I moved on to the curriculum analysis. So as I said, the teachers did cite second step as the number-one mode of educating students about race and race education in their classroom. And so I decided to evaluate the second step curriculum. And so second step encourages discussion among peers about individual differences, but it does not actively encourage racial discussion specifically. So it'll encourage discussion around talking about, you know, different foods that you like or, you know, different sports that you play or whatever. But it does not encourage discussion around, you know, differences of race or racial issues or anything like that. And so because of that and many other things pointed out on the rubric, the second step curriculum scored a 2 out of 10. And what this means, so on the rubric, if a curriculum is adequate, it would score a 5 or higher. But if it was inadequate, it would score a 4 or lower. And so obviously, based on my curriculum analysis, second step is not adequate. The curriculum defines prejudice but does not address racial prejudice specifically, nor does it discuss the history or source of prejudice. The term "race" is never defined, and no racial language is used in any lesson. So they'll say things like "hair texture," but they will not say the words "African-American" or "black" or "Asian" or any of those race-based language or racial definers. Yeah, and then racial identity is not mentioned at all. Privilege is also not addressed or defined throughout the entire curriculum. Yeah, so just the key points from the curriculum analysis. So second step is not sufficient race education. The results of the analysis support the hypothesis that students would benefit from further multiracial education. And then the results disprove my assumption, which I made at the beginning, which is that students in this district have a basic understanding of race and racial issues. So based on my analysis of the second step, it looks like students are not getting a full, like, are not getting a lot of education around race and racial issues. And so this curriculum is definitely lacking when it comes to race education. Yeah, so then that concludes phase one. And then I moved on to phase two. I wanted, the reason I decided to move on to phase two was because I wanted to get more information about how second step affected students later on. So I surveyed students at Wauwatosa East who are obviously in the same district and many of whom had gone through the second step system or the second step curriculum in elementary school. So of the students exposed to second step, so this was any student who had attended Wauwatosa Elementary Schools, 38% have no memory of race education in elementary school. That means no memory of history lessons, no memory of second step, no memory of any talk about race at all in elementary school, 38%. And of the students that cited elementary school as their first experience with race education, 92% of students cited some sort of history lesson as their first experience with race. And then 10.9% of students reported actually participating in racial discussions in elementary school. And I believe I had around 3% of students say anything about, say anything along the lines that might have been, you know, we could maybe infer, like, you know, hypothesize that that was second step, but no student actually meant, I had zero students mention second step specifically as a way that they learned about race. So I think that's really important. So when we're talking about race, students in the district learned about it through history in elementary school or they didn't learn about it at all in elementary school. And even when they did learn about it in history, obviously, they didn't talk about it as we had so few participating. Yeah, um, and then so the second part of the survey was these narrative responses. So I asked them two questions. Or I asked them a couple of questions. Um, I, I actually asked them three questions. So the first one was just describe your first experience with race education. Um, and the second one was to describe how you felt the first time that you talked about race in school. The third one was just, do you have any further questions or further thoughts about this? Um, and so I'll draw your attention to the first one. Um, so quote, "It was probably during sixth grade social studies class. There was definitely times when there would be racial slurs said during school time or during recess that I would hear, but I never made note of it." This is in response to, "One was the first time that you talked about race in school." And she was, I had multiple students cite racial slurs as the first time that they talked about race in school. Um, quote, uh, and this was in response to the feelings question was quote, "I, like, I didn't get to have a say slash opinion because I'm half white and half Asian, so I'm not a minority." This is clearly a multiracial student experiencing um a lot of identity confusion and who's, you know, experienced, who's having a really hard time um talking about race, you know, as a multiracial student. So specifically for my research, I found this very important. Another one, quote, "I think for me, it's more of a thing where I don't feel like I should speak on it as a white person, but at the same time, I'm expected, it's expected to be discussed in classes of all or mostly white kids, which just perpetuates the issue." Um, I think this is a really big issue in our district, as it is, we do have a majority of white kids. I think there's a real feeling of white fragility and white guilt that's sort of, you know, cook, like, that's sort of implemented in the curriculum. So a lot of white students feel that they are not allowed to speak um on issues of race, which obviously, you know, just makes everything worse because then we don't talk about it and then, you know, current ideas fester and, you know, things like that start to happen. And the last one is, quote, "Nervous and ambivalent. I think we've been taught from a young age to feel discomfort when confronted with this topic, so I definitely felt uncomfortable and also frustrated about some things, some things that people said." So, yeah, I think that's, you know, that really says it perfectly. Um, and you know, the evidence from the student interviews also backed that up and the evidence from my curriculum analysis and my teacher interviews, all that, all backed that up, that students feel uncomfortable. Yeah, so then just um here's some more data about the student um survey narrative responses. So the responses show a general feeling of inadequacy around students' experiences with race education. So I had no students say that they enjoyed that their experience with race education. I had zero students say, you know, outright positive things about race, about the race education system. Um, I had most students either say negative things or completely neutral things, like they felt nothing, they felt ambivalent, they felt fine. Um, many student answers um displayed feelings of white fragility. So there, there were many instances of students feeling guilty, many instances of students feeling angry, um, things like that. Uh, eighty-two point four percent of students expressed direct discomfort when discussing race at school, so they specifically um show, said that they were uncomfortable, nervous, and things like that. Um, and as I said, any of those other things were just sort of ambivalent answers. And then the majority of students displayed signs of having an insecure racial identity. Obviously, I can't judge someone's racial identity based on an anonymous, anonymous survey and three questions, three narrative responses. But I do think that the narrative responses point to there being an issue around racial identity within schools and how schools talk about and teach race. Yeah, so then the key points from the adult survey. Um, I, I basically, I did the adult survey just to see what the general feeling around race education is um in the district and how the, you know, people in the community view race education. So um I had eighty-six point eight percent of adults believe that race should be discussed in elementary school or before. So the majority of adults are totally, are, are behind talking about ra- race as a, at a young age, um rather than um in middle school. Um, yeah, and then also the majority of adults stated in some way that children have an awareness of race that should not be ignored. Um, so many, many adults in their narrative responses said something along the lines of, "Kids know about race. We should be talking about it in school. We shouldn't ignore it. Ignoring perpetuates the issue." Um, and then I can assume that the community would support discussing race more extensively in elementary school. I didn't ask this specifically, but just, you know, looking at those answers, it, it, we can, you know, sense that most adults would be comfortable with this. Yeah, and so um all of that evidence leads me to my first conclusion. So Wauwataosa's race education curriculum does not adequately educate students about race and racial issues. Um, and obviously, this is a very bold, you know, conclusion to, to come to, but I think the evidence from the student survey, the evidence from my curriculum analysis, um, as well as um all of my interviews, all point to students not being adequately educated about race in elementary school. Um, yeah. Conclusion two is that students in Wauwataosa would definitely benefit, or not, would benefit from more excessive race, extensive race education that aims to foster strong, positive racial identities in all students. So I think, um, just looking at, you know, all of, all of the evidence together, um, I think it really seems that students would benefit from this more education, talking about this more. And I think that the district should really be trying to foster a more comfortable environment around talking about race as race is a part of our lives every day. Yeah, and so just some limitations. Um, obviously, there was, there was quite a few limitations as this was quite a unique school year. Um, so first of all, school closures and social distancing requirements necessitated by the COVID nineteen pandemic made collecting data a lot more complicated. Um, so you know, I had to get a little bit creative. Um, with the ways that I collected data, I had to do, you know, more electronic stuff, things like that. And also because of the closures, I only interviewed a small sample of elementary school students and teachers. So unfortunately, I was only able to get into one school. Um, and uh in terms of Zooms and stuff, it just felt way too overwhelming to be trying to set those up in the middle of the pandemic. And also so much of this stuff, um, when it comes to this comfort, I, you really need to be in the same room with the person, um, to get a sense of that. And so I was only able to interview a very small sample of elementary school students and teachers. Um, but I still think the, the data stands. Um, then also the majority of, of the responses, with the, the responses to both surveys self-identified as white. So I did get most people respond to the surveys as white. Um, which is, you know, reflect, reflective of how many students are in our district, you know, there's, there is just more white students in our district. But I also think it's reflective of how, you know, how people participate in the district and we, we do just generally get more white students responding um to things like this, unfortunately. But again, I think the data stands. Um, yeah, so then I'll move into just my future recommendations. So these are just my, everything that I've collected, what, what do I think should happen with all of this data? Um, so firstly, I would recommend more, recommend a more extensive inquiry into the environment around race education in Wauwataosa. Specifically, I would recommend a more extensive inquiry into the discomfort I observed in elementary school students and high school students. So um initially going into this, I was not um doing, gonna, I was not planning on doing a review of all of the race education. I went into this assuming that students had a fairly solid, general race education and that, um, you know, they would benefit from more education around multiracial, multiracial issues specifically. Um, but obviously, looking at all this, I realized that there is a lot of, um, just general race education and general comfort around talking about race, um, that's lacking um in the elementary school. So I would definitely recommend that you do a further, I, you would, you study that more and really look at that more. Yeah, so then my second, um, future recommendation is after a more extensive inquiries carried out, I recommend the district make efforts to develop a new race education curriculum with the help of a race education expert. I recommend the new curriculum educates elementary school students about race and racial issues and aims to help students develop a strong, positive sense of their own racial identity. Um, so I think it is, and I, I think it's really important that the district have race education curriculum in place that aims to foster strong, positive racial identities in all students and that aims to be actively anti-racist and encourages a comfortable, safe environment when it talk, when it comes to talking about race. Um, and I think that the district should use the information gleaned from this other study as well as the help of, um, you know, experts in the field of race education, people who know a lot about this, um, to come up with a curriculum that really supports students in their racial identity journey. And then finally, my last recommendation was that I would recommend that the district support a study that investigates the impact of implementing a new race education curriculum. So I would definitely suggest that, you know, if a new curriculum is made and implemented, that there be a study that really makes sure that this curriculum is effective and that this curriculum, um, number one, isn't making anything worse and two, is actually making a positive change. Because the worst thing would be for in twenty years, for somebody to have to make another presentation like this. Um, so I think that really there needs to be another study showing the effects of a new race education curriculum. Yeah, and so that, that pretty much concludes my presentation. So um I've been talking about my full paper this entire time. So if you want to go and look at that whole pa- that full paper, you know, that's the link right there, as well as just um a copy of my bibliography, where I look at my sources. So there you go.
Nice job, nice job, Antonia. So if you have any questions for um Antonia about, and like she's been referring, her paper is detailed and linked up there for your reading pleasure. Um, and I think the goal here was to not only for me to have an opportunity to share Antonia's research with you guys, because I'm really proud of her. Um, but also we wanted to just kind of put this out there that she put this hard work in, concluded that Second Step is not what we want it to be for race education and probably something we should think about in the future. But questions about her paper? Go ahead.
Mr. Coleman? Well, I just want to thank you, Antonia, for all the work that you did. It's pretty amazing. I hope if you continue this in your academic career, you have a chance to come back and do all the work that you wanted to do, um, when we're through with this pandemic, so. Um, I hope someday we get a chance to do that. My question is really um around your recommendation for changing curriculum, which um it seems warranted. What are your thoughts on the teachers who, you know, felt uncomfortable discussing race, even if they had a different curriculum? If they don't have that comfort in discussing race and those topics, would they be able to be effective in discussing that curriculum? So my question is, is that and is it even a further step back in, in finding teachers and helping our teachers to be comfortable um discuss race before we even get into changing curriculum?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a really good question. Um, I want to say that the, that the district is absolutely doing a great thing um with all, all of the stuff around equity that you've been doing. Um, you know, I, I, the name is like, uh, flipping away from me right now. But I do think that there, that you guys are really making an effort to make, you know, to make teachers more active and anti-racist and things like that. So I do think that there is a way for teachers to be in a place where they are comfortable enough to start fostering this environment. But I definitely think that it takes more teacher training. Um, I think that it takes, you know, and, and, and experts coming in, um, and talking to teachers. And really, the only way to get comfortable with talking about race is by just talking about race. You know, having teachers talk to each other about race, having teachers really reflect on their classrooms and reflect on their classroom environment. Um, and look at their classroom environment really honestly and say, you know, is my classroom a place where students actually feel comfortable talking about race? Or am I mistaking comfort for just avoiding the topic altogether? Because I think that's a thing that happens, is teachers think that if we don't talk about race, that means that it's fine. But it's really the opposite, you know, talking about race is good, you know, we need to be talking about race, you know, that's how things get better.
Thank you.
And I, I just will say to the point about the curriculum, I think what Antonia found about the Second Step curriculum, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Antonia. But what she found was that it really doesn't mention race much at all. And so if I'm a teacher that's not teaching social studies or history and I'm relying on Second Step to bring up race and it's really not there, then, then I have to come up with my own arsenal of lessons and then I start to get a little, like, if there's a curriculum where race is addressed, I think that is something that um is better. Obviously, you want it to be addressed in the right ways. But it's better than having a curriculum that doesn't address race and trying to use that as a way to have a racial discussion.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point and I think that's maybe where I was driving it, but it'd be, you know, it'd be great if we had teachers who always felt comfortable discussing race, because then they would be able to self-identify that, hey, this curriculum's not meeting the standards and I'm going to figure out a way to, to bring that, that piece to, to my students, you know, instead of relying on a curriculum um that they were given and told that this might discuss race. And I, I don't know if that, that's the case or not, but, you know, we really need to develop a, a staff that is comfortable identifying, you know, what curriculum will work and understanding where we want to go. So I, I think that's a really interesting point of, you know, is the curriculum there or is it not? And do we have the right staff to implement it?
Yeah, I think staff training is definitely a huge factor in this, like, the staff really does need to be trained with the curriculum before it's implemented um in order for it to actually be effective.
Antonia, Mr. Coleman stole my question. I, I just want to say thank you for answering that because I was really curious your perspective, because I think student voice is really important when we talk about this. Um, but I also just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Sampson. Um, I tend to ask kids, uh, when they come back from college, what were the classes that prepared them best to succeed in life and in, in school if they've chosen college? And uh AP Research is one of the top three responses I get regularly, um, as is very evident by your presentation, Antonia. So I would love it if you could send us a new link, though the link at the end did not work for me. I think it's because as of July thirty-first, I think all of your, your Google access for us was shut down. So it probably worked the first time you delivered it for us, but it doesn't anymore.
Yeah, I'll definitely send another link, yeah.
I'd love to see some of those charts and graphs, so thank you both of you.
And if for some reason it doesn't work when she sends her updated link, just let me know because I have access to it as well.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, Ms. Sampson, I think there's uh, great, this is great timing for you to bring it forward. Um, and Antonia, it's really amazing that you spent time in, um, you know, figuring out how to do this, um, certainly in the environment that we were in. So uh what I can share is anecdotally from conversations that I've had with students is they definitely are comfortable with different staff members and speaking on this topic and even how kids are treated in school. I think um this is an area that we really need to educate uh more on and bringing this to our attention, I think, was spot on. So thank you, and I look forward to us working on this, uh, working on this curriculum and making it a good conversation so everyone understands.
Hello, um, Eric, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Antonia, I just want to say thank you. I have sat through over sixteen years of board meetings and your work is some of the most important, insightful work that I've seen presented to the board in Wauwataosa. So as you go out into the world, oh, believe in yourself. You are, are doing very good things. Thank you.
Other board questions and comments? I think I shared this uh with uh Ms. Sampson and Antonia when they sent the information. Kristin, Kristin, Kristin Rand, who's a faculty member who used a lot of her research for, I believe, the rubric, was on my dissertation committee. And it was somebody who I've done research with, so I was really excited uh to see her work being applied through K twelve education and actually sent her this information. And I, I, I thought it was a, a neat study, um, that really dug into some things. Um, and I think the recommendation to continue to take a look at this of different ways. And I think a really neat opportunity for our new Director of Equity to, I think, dig into and see what may make sense uh at different levels of curriculum. But thank you so much for this. I thought it was really neat and I really enjoyed uh reading it and also uh digging into the paper when I read that and I looked at that as well. Other comments and questions on this item?
So I just want to add, I know there was, there's a lot of limitations to the study, but I think it just reinforces the point. If you look over the past three to four years, the work we've been doing on equity and the hires and the work people have been doing in the district. And it's, it's not one of those things you ever get there, but we have a lot of people dedicated to continuing to grow that. And I just, I think the opportunity for her to be able to present this to a live audience and, and to, to share that and to make her research real is really cool. So there's a lot of different components here that I think are just really exciting about this, so thank you.
Thank you guys for giving us the opportunity and I'm sure Antonia loves to hear that it's something that you guys hope to talk about in the future.
Yes, thank you so much for letting me present to you. It really means, it means a lot.
Hey, Dr. Jess Banger?
Yes, sir.
Uh, one passing thought, I guess, here, uh, in thinking about this resource of the AP Research class and to see the talent that's clearly coming out of it and to see Ms. Sampson's engagement here. Um, and also just thinking through the student surveying that we- Um and also just thinking through the student surveying that we do on an annual basis, I wonder if there's a way uh to engage these classes in a conversation about the things that we're surveying maybe students, staff and parents about and see if there are ways to enhance some of the survey um questionnaires that are going out to make what we do even more rich and relevant to what's going on. Just seems like a good connection point potentially between the two. Food for thought.
I was just gonna say I definitely, we do a whole little unit on how to word questions and how to yield data according to, you know, the what you're trying to actually get a temperature check on and how to do it ethically, so. Um I would love to send some kids over to help with some survey data creation and make sure that gets more eyes on the surveys. If that's something that we could set up, I'd be happy to facilitate.
Yeah, I just think it might be an interesting, real-life opportunity and something that's relevant that'll show up in their daily lives, so.
Mm hmm.
Throw it out there.
Jamie, is there any community comment or questions on this item?
We have one attendee with their hand raised or two. Uh first one, Catherine Wilks. You have the microphone.
Hi, I'm Catherine Wilks. Um I teach at Underwood. Um thank you for doing this, Antonia. This is great information. There are lots of teachers that I know have been working on um continuing our education on anti-bias and I know specifically at my building this summer, we have a group that's working on um the book White Fragility and how we can apply that in our classrooms. So we really do want to make the changes that you're speaking of um and really um make this a place that teachers feel comfortable having these kinds of conversations with children. Um so really hoping that seeing that the board is really supporting this, that we can continue looking at what kind of curriculum we can put in place so that it is happening not just in the buildings where these book conversations are happening, but everywhere. Thank you. Your presentation was awesome. Um you are gonna do great things, young lady.
Thank you.
We also have another attendee with the name of Lisa. Lisa, you have the mic. You'll need to unmute yourself. Lisa, you will need to unmute yourself. You have the microphone. Okay. I'm going to disable talking. We can return to that. Dr. Jess Banger, there's no one else.
Thank you so much. Antonia, best of luck. I believe, are you, you're off to school in St. Louis?
Yeah, I'm going to Washington University in St. Louis.
Congratulations. Great institution and uh I can continue to uh do great things in Wauwatoosa when you're back visiting or if you move back here afterwards, but best of luck uh in what will no doubt be a very exciting first year of college for you.
Thank you. Yes, and and thank you to the board.
Thank you.
We really appreciate this. With that, um we are going to move into our school reopening plan update. Uh no discussion or voting this evening from the board uh or discussion we'll have, but no vote or discussion this week. Um but an update from the district uh and possibly uh some community comment and discussion on the side as well. Doctor?
Thank you. Um I'm gonna try to give an update and have a couple of other people update on progress that we're making regarding school reopening. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone. Our parents, our students, our staff. This is really challenging. It's challenging for parents to be able to make a decision, for students to make a decision, and we know, we don't have all the details. We're we're trying to get information out as quickly as we can and show what we can and answer as many questions that have come forward. But I I really appreciate everybody's patience as we work through this and try to make a good decision. Try to create a good program for our students. So I'll touch on a couple of a couple of different issues of where we're at in the planning. Currently with um the TOSA Connected Program, we have as of right now, about a thousand students that have signed up out of seventy-four hundred students, which is somewhere around eighteen percent of the students are looking at the TOSA Connected Program. Mark Carter and Dean Nemor are working right now to develop that. The challenge we have with that program is we need to get students before we can get the program set up. We need to know how many students and across grade levels and actually, as we look at the distribution, I looked at it most recently this afternoon. The distribution looks pretty good across the elementary level and the middle school. Smaller numbers at the high school than I had had thought, which presents a challenge, but um we're gonna keep working through those and we'll end up looking at it again tomorrow for final numbers to see where everything's at with all of that. So we're gonna start out making sure we offer core core courses, English, math, science, social studies, and then work from there and develop the other options that we can within within that system. I think we went into it knowing and telling people when you sign up for it, you're not necessarily going to get the same classes you chose, in particular at the high school level. Elementary and middle school is going to look a little different. And probably more consistent across those grade levels, but the electives are are based on enrollment and and like I said, student interest. WVA, right now, we have three hundred and thirty students, so we'll start reaching out to those families and getting them signed up and getting them ready for WVA as soon as we get we get going. We had a handful of people, I think it was six, that signed up for 4K and WVA, which is not an option, so we'll reach out to those families and talk about the option for TOSA Connect or Phase Into Learning. So the Phase Into Learning Plan, um there's roughly seventy-four percent or seventy-five percent of the families at this point have chosen that path. So we are, we did finalize our Medical Public Health Advisory Panel and um I'm gonna let Mr. Domon touch on, we've had two meetings so far. We have another meeting coming up once, even though Mr. Domon touched on progress as he is a member of that committee.
Yeah, um so far we've had two meetings to date. Uh it's a group that's gonna meet weekly. So far, it's been an amazing group, I think, full of professionals from all um different disciplines. And they've been more than willing to kind of share and and drive their drive the discussion and their thoughts and and really keeping in mind how best serves our our families and our students and our teachers, um all important pieces here. So it's been great to see. We are working towards kind of finalizing some metrics and what that might look like. I know some folks have liked that sooner, um but it's really been a great discussion to kind of have that and it's continued even from last Wednesday's meeting. It's if people find new information and new articles and and new data points, as we all know, this is an extremely fluid situation. They're sharing that with the group and 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 bringing that together for everyone to kind of digest and and move forward. One thing I think that's key is that um the group is looking at both internal and external metrics, so not just numbers in our community or our state or the nation, um but also internally. You know, what does it look like to have enough teachers? What does it look like to have enough students to make sense to be here and things like that? I think that's equally important and and one thing that they're looking at as well. So I think often when people think of metrics, they just think of, you know, confirmed cases or positive cases. Um but there's also, you know, we have to have enough teachers to be able to teach and and students here in school and and capability of testing and things like that. So um a lot of things um have been brought to light and I certainly didn't think of, so really appreciate all their expertise. And in one area that I think has really shown is kind of the mental health experts that we have on the panel. They're pretty amazing and they've really brought to light some great points, I think, of what our parents are going through as they kind of digest all this information and what our teachers might be experiencing in our students. Because we all know goes well beyond just uh, you know, testing and and treating this disease, but really, what does it look like for our community from a mental health standpoint? So I greatly appreciate that. But and I'll just point out one thing that they really kind of brought forward and and I'm sure Dr. Earl had thought of this too, but kind of the going back and forth between different phases um and kind of what that would look like for students and and how we don't want to kind of be jockeying back and forth and how we really want to be thoughtful to our approach of when we go from a virtual to a hybrid to a full in-person and, you know, not going back and forth, you know, often could be could be real important. I thought that was a great highlight from our from our last meeting, but those are the kind of high points as I see them so far, but so far I've been very pleased with the group we have and their willingness to share their time and and their expertise has been really great and we're we're very fortunate to have these people available to us as a district.
Thank you. And I I think the other thing that comes out of it too is there is no magic answer for any kind of metric. And I I think when you get people together that we have for that that committee, we're gonna get, something good is gonna come out of it. And I I think they're dedicated to making sure our goal of getting kids back in school and doing it safely, so. With that being said, also, we're working through the cohorting. So we will have that by the end of the week, uh hopefully completed, so people will know know when we get to the the two days with the hybrid of which cohort they would be in. That'll start in earnest uh tomorrow, once we get, we finalize um all the enrollments, so we'll be working through that. Continuing to work with Right at School, there's some challenges with licensing and space availability to create additional spaces for for daycare, um but we will keep keep working on that. Excuse me. PPE, we have masks ordered for staff and students. And we're also working through a process and form for staff so they can identify needs and we'll have those delivered to all staff members in in short time. And I think Melissa is gonna touch on that a little bit more when she shares some information. So under communication, we've been fielding a lot of inquiries, obviously with email as well as the board has, and I really appreciate all the board members giving responding when you can. We're trying to be as responsive as we possibly can with communications and questions and and answers. We have the contact form. People are reaching out that way. Social media. It's another way we're we're trying to communicate. We've been updating the reopening page and FAQ um when we asked how and that was gonna be done. It's being done multiple times per day, so we're continuing to try to keep that on an ongoing basis. Also, our Community Responsibility Campaign on social media and trying to get people to see the importance of wearing a mask, tips for getting children to wear masks, do's and don'ts, and then social distancing tips. So we'll continue with that kind of social media presence as well for that. And uh also with the Mental and Emotional Health Checklist as well. I think Mr. Domon hit it spot on. There's some really important points regarding uh mental health that we need to make sure we're communicating and providing support for our parents and students as we go through this. Uh we're also trying to be proactive with communication as as well and not just reactive. Um we're translating key information into Vietnamese, Mandarin Chinese and Spanish. So all of the the reopening information, getting it out that way. We've taken outreach with families, um with students with IAPs. So there's a couple of communications that have gone out. We'll continue to reach out individually for those that have significant challenges that we need to readdress through IAPs. Um also communicating, as I mentioned, email, social media, um a lot of other ways. And we're also working with the Donovan Group to help support the execution of of our communication tasks as well, and they've been very helpful in in working with us. So as I mentioned, we have um as of about an hour ago, we had fifty-eight hundred responses. And I know on the forum, we mentioned if people don't respond, that they would be placed in the Phase Into Learning. So I'm assuming some people will not respond and they will be placed and they may not respond because they know that if they don't, they would be placed in that, but overall, extremely happy with the number of people that have responded and also, again, apologies to the people that have really struggled answering it because they need more information and wanting more information and we don't have, we don't have the information they're looking for right now, and I know it's a challenge to ask them to to make a decision that's gonna have a significant impact, but we're gonna do our best to make sure whatever program students are in starting uh September eighth, that we're gonna be successful, we're gonna provide a quality education for for all of them in this in a safe way, so. We also have about one on one percent of our students, um mostly JKs. The question about are you gonna stay enrolled in the school district? There's JK since it is a voluntary enrollment. There's a number of them that are looking to either stay home or homeschool for that, so we're gonna reach out to some of the families that are looking at homeschooling and encouraging some an approach through the WVA or through TOSA Connects. The ones other than JK, so. Mrs. Bowers, can you touch a little bit on some of the work that's going on?
Sure. Um in in terms of the instructional planning over the last two weeks since we last met, we have been meeting in meeting quite a bit with our building principals to take a look at the details and the implementation that needs to occur to make each of those models of instruction successful. We are currently finalizing our virtual schedules for all levels and the accompanying guidelines for teaching and learning in that virtual model. This week and early next week, we will be finalizing the scheduling and the guidelines for teaching and learning in the hybrid model. And this week, we're also solidifying the details around our professional learning plan for those two weeks prior to students' arrival on September eighth. Uh right now, that plan includes learning and support in the implementation of Canvas. We are in the process of getting those accounts ready to go and anticipate that they will be live for teachers next week. And once those accounts are live, we will be uh sharing with staff our training and support plan. During those two weeks prior to students arriving, we've also carved out time for relationship building and community building among staff members to give them some time to reconnect at the building level. Our buildings will also have time to review the operational and logistics protocols to create safe and wel- welcoming learning environments. There will be time for teachers to meet PLCs to collaborate around instructional planning in Canvas and also the implementation of those operations and logistics protocols. And then finally, we are planning some learning around engaging in rigorous instruction in any one of those models, and that will be kind of a launching off point um at at that two-week mark before the start of the year and something that we will continue to build on as the year progresses.
So just one of the, one of the other challenges and really starting in earnest again this week. Seems like a lot of things are really digging in this week, but matching up, we did survey the teachers too of those that have an interest in teaching in the virtual model as well as those that might have medical or FMLA issues. So we'll be working through that component of getting those people and and working through to see if they're able to work in a virtual school, the TOSA Connect. And then in response, then backfilling those positions um wherever they were at too. So that's another component with with TOSA Connect. Mark, anything you want to share with everybody?
Uh just maybe. Uh there are three partnerships, so we have, we're able to add additional partner for testing, servant, HR, and then twenty-four employee hours and zero COVID.
Ida, anything from HR?
Um we uh have been putting a lot of communication out, um just making sure that our staff understands the different FMLA and some of the modifications you had to do with COVID. Uh we put together um a more visual opportunity. We make sure that they know if they have any medical conditions that they can reach out to Jenny Fodge, our human, our Director of Human Resources, to walk them through that process. Uh so they really understand that. We also have um along them uh the wellness, staff wellness. Uh tomorrow, we have a a Zoom that we are promoting to all of our staff um around Employee Assistance Program and healthy coping amid challenging times. Uh we wanted to push that out sooner than later and continue to provide these levels of support. Um as we all know, our staff right now with the uncertainties, um obviously, need an outlet and different coping mechanisms. So that is something that we uh want to actively pursue and push out for our staff.
Thank you. Melissa, any updates from B and G?
I don't have a mic, so I don't see your ears.
You can come up here if you want. I think those are working.
Okay, so I uh yeah, just briefly, just one in ten days, we have received almost all of our PPE and uh we are sorting that out currently and distributing. Our custodian cleaning matrix has actually gone into full effect. Our extra hours have been secured and we are dedicating the first two weeks before school for all tr- new training on uh what to do for the school year. Uh we also have the Welcome Back Check Staff Checklist, which we are um teaming up with all of the assistant superintendents and all the chairs of the committees, uh which will include information, anything related to where our staff, it's really a Welcome Back Staff Checklist. And one thing that we're asking, being asked of from staff is where can we get more PP if we need it? Where can we get more mental health training if we need it? Where can we get? What do I do with a child that? Where can we get, what do I do with a child that is sick but may have COVID, may does, maybe does not? So all of this will be put together in a checklist of different forms that they can look into or review as they need it. This will also have information from our medical advisory team on what COVID-19 actually is and how they can navigate, navigate the symptoms of COVID-19. Lastly, we're just forming up logistics within our buildings at our elementary and secondary level. This would be for any type of passing time, lunch, classroom, classroom-specific to band, orchestra music, art and gym. Thank you.
And also Jamie, if you can just give a brief update on some of the technology pieces we're working on?
Sure. So with Chromebooks, we have identified that the rapid distribution and reinstallation of Chromebooks into the elementary schools is a challenge. So we're implementing cabinets in each of those that will enable that. As far as Chromebook issuance goes, we have enough Chromebooks for every single student in the district. Incoming ninth and sixth graders will receive new ones, which was part of the regular rotation. Pre-pandemic, both those school levels were going to be one-to-one issuance anyway this year. That distribution will be occurring in mid-August. Those students will return the devices that were issued to them to us. Students that did not take a Chromebook over the summer will also be given an opportunity to receive one again in mid-August. All of that issuance will be drive-up kiosks at two locations, one on each side of the town, each side of town. We were also creating a low-cost insurance program that families will be able to, be able to participate in for those devices. We're working with Teaching and Learning Department to implement Canvas. We're working with Infinite Campus or the, or we did work with Infinite Campus for the cohort assignments that needed to be created. That'll happen this week. And parent and student access to view their cohort assignments will be granted on Friday. We were going to do that on Monday, but after the last board meeting, there was a comment made asking that we could share that information maybe on a Friday so that it can be absorbed over the weekend. And we heard that, so we've changed it. That'll now be Friday afternoon that that information will be available. Online forms and fees, or what some people have called registration day, that was where the schools would open and families would come in and pay their fees and get all their flyers and information and sign up for clubs or whatever else. That'll be completely online this year. Longfellow will be doing their first day on August 12th, this Wednesday. The second day will be on the 18th for them. The rest of the district will also be over the week of the 18th. We're going to use Canvas as the launch point for families for that. Infinite Campus will provide the majority of interaction, but Campus will give us the opportunity to put school-specific and unique items in there and communications in there just for those schools themselves. Helpdesk has been implemented, we're implementing a new Helpdesk system. We did open up the Helpdesk to families and students when the pandemic started and we will continue with that. The new Helpdesk system, however, will accommodate greater ties between the hardware that they have and the issues that they submit. We have a standard task, of course, commencement school year, new teacher training schedules, rostering, preps, all that sort of thing. And also the implementation of tech in the new construction buildings. That's all I have.
And that is our update. Questions from the board?
Dr. Jessa Bangrager, start.
Go for it.
Thank you. Thank you, I mean, thank you for all of the work that has been done. It's a ton of work. I know we're way ahead and way deeper in the weeds than a lot of other organizations. So again, I really appreciate the hard and difficult work that we are choosing to do on behalf of a lot of people who are looking for choices. So again, really appreciate it. The questions I've got related to, well, if I guess first one related to Melissa for supplies, do you have a sense of how many, you know, weeks, months of supplies we have? I'm just trying to think of, and what are the things that could goof us up that are, you know, external to us? Like is there a certain amount of PPE that we have or have we checked to see if, you know, the cleaning services caught, you know, COVID and they had to quarantine? You know, what would we do as backup options? Or can you just walk me through through some of those scenarios that could affect us if, you know, something external would happen?
Yeah, absolutely. So ultimately, for PPE, you know, it's hard to say how many weeks or months we have for PPE because it all depends on how people take care of them. What we do have, I will provide some numbers just on N95 masks. To clarify, we have 18,000 N95 masks right now. We have, you know, tens of thousands of the surgical masks and ultimately cloth masks as well. That will last us, it sounds like a lot, it does. But it's actually, it's really not when we've got nearly almost 1,000 staff members, there between 800 and 1,000 that we're at least giving masks to. One of the things we are trying to implement are safety precautions and care of each mask, which means a N95 can go much longer if you take care of it and we can do things to mitigate the need to change it out every day. And we are working, I actually work with a couple of specialists on the medical advisory committee to just say, hey, in your professional opinion, what can we do to prolong the longevity of these masks? So hopefully that'll, that'll last us some time. I really don't have, like I said, a say that says yes, that's going to last us two months, that's going to last us six months, that's going to last us a year. I can say probably if this goes on for over a year, we will definitely not have enough. So we will have to definitely prolong that as far as N95s. The other masks, we can readily get available, but then 95s are harder to come by. As far as cleaning, we are working with our cleaning, the cleaning procedure is actively in place to make sure that we try to mitigate the risk as much as possible as far as changing shifts. So we will do some second shift, some first shift, but they won't cross over and they'll actually use different rooms when they go to and from work. And that way, if one, if a COVID positive does happen, we definitely will make sure that we try to mitigate that as much as possible. If they do come in contact with somebody in our building that has positive, we would follow the same procedures that we would normally for anybody else. Anything that is positive in any of our contractors or any of our B&amp;G staff would be reported as well. And we have been able to do that and track that actively at this point. I think those are your two questions, Sean.
Yeah, I guess my only other question would be if, for some reason, you know, a vendor was just all of a sudden off the table because they were all unavailable due to quarantine? Just, I'm just trying to think of every possible, what could gum up this school year? You know, if all of a sudden we lost a vendor, it would be easy to find another one.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a few vendors and/or contractors out there, specifically to the contractor, construction world. We have had it happen where we had a group of carpenters go, they were, test, one tested positive, the others had to go into quarantine. This did happen about two, three weeks ago, but we were able to supplement, supplement that work with other carpenters. So the, the industry isn't at a point where we are not able to find backups or support to come in and step in when we need it. However, we're actively watching that because at any point, you're right, that is an external factor we constantly have to monitor, which is why we are taking our precautionary measures so careful. We're taking them very seriously and very carefully because it really impacts the entire crew if somebody gets, if somebody was to come down positive.
Thank you. Another question would be, at what point, I guess before we vote on the budget, do we get a sense of sort of the new budget reality that we are working in? Is it maybe when people lock in their decisions that we start to get the sense of what's the budget impact of all of this with people enrolling in WVA and TOSA Connected and just sort of everything? When do we get that updated sense?
I think we should be able to get an early estimate in a couple of weeks. It's going to be, you know, I mentioned earlier, it's going to be significant, but within a couple of weeks, we should be able to determine what our staffing needs are. We've, I know Murda has tracked all of our COVID expenses, so from PPE and different things that are, we wouldn't have spent. So we'll have an accurate number, certainly by budget time, but I would think just kind of an estimate in a couple of weeks, we should be able to get that to you.
Great, that'd be great. One question I'm getting a lot is related to the virtual and the four-day schedule. Can somebody just sort of walk through, just so I can speak to it, the rationale as to why it's a four-day week and then the one-day catch-up? I kind of get it, but I would love to hear it in somebody's words that set it off.
Ms. Bowers, you want to touch on that?
Sure, sure. So the idea is teaching in the virtual setting is very difficult and much different from what we've done previously. So we want to make sure that, that both the students and the teachers have the time to prepare. So giving the students the time at the end of the week rather than in the middle of the week gives them a chance to catch up on the things that might have compounded over the week. It gives them time to reach out to a teacher and get some support and it transitions them away from learning only one time during the week. And then for teachers, it gives them that day to plan for the virtual instruction for the upcoming week, to meet with colleagues, and then also opportunity for us to provide professional learning for ongoing support of engaging in rigorous instruction in that context.
Okay. Do you think that's a, a setup that will endure during the entire, let's say, semester that they're doing it? Or is there any thought that it would accelerate to four and a half or five days? Or, or do you think that's pretty sad for the whole time?
At this point, we are set with the four-day schedule. We have not had other conversations around changing that.
Okay. Then the only other question would be, and this is something I talked to Dr. Erdel and Dr. Jessa Bangrager about too, is just the, the policy around the staff, the contract to be able to hop out of their contract if they find something. So here's my concern. My concern is we've provided a lot of really great choices for the students and the parents in the districts, and I just want to make sure that we're providing an equally, or at least a choice for the staff if they just really don't feel comfortable with doing this. I would hate to create a financial disincentive for them to go out and do something and for just other people who don't know. The district charges $2,000 or $3,000 for folks who, you know, as it gets later on in the summer, go out and find other things because it makes it difficult for us to staff up, and I completely understand that. But this just seems like an environment where we wouldn't want to put that penalty on to people, especially if they still don't know if they're teaching virtually or if they're going to be teaching in a classroom. To me, it just seems fair to remove that policy or if we're not going to remove that policy to have, you know, staff appeal and then we can hear it then. But I just wanted to share my view on that, that, you know, removing that policy even temporarily, to me, gives the staff sort of a choice to say that if they're not comfortable, they can go find another option that is comfortable to them. And I would hate for a board policy to, to be in the way of that. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
Other more coming?
A couple of questions, and, and I don't expect answers so much as like when people might be able to expect to hear this. So I feel like we're starting to move now that we've got the phases or the, the choices out there. Parents are getting into a lot of the like, when will we hear what kind of masks that our kids should have? And like, they're, they're wanting to get to the really specific and should they be going to the principals? Or like, when should parents expect the next sort of big communication push in terms of like back to school? Like typically by now, parents are out doing their back to school shopping and all that sort of stuff. And so again, I'm not asking for answers on like what kind of masks they need so much as like, is it the week of the 24th that they're going to get a big communication? Is it before that? Sort of like, when can they expect to hear more about the specificity of things so that, nothing personal listeners, that you can sort of hold off on those questions right now so we can figure out the big important stuff and then get that information out?
I would anticipate more of that will be coming next week. I mean, I think the rest of this week is really about trying to get things more organized and determining where everybody's going to be, what grade levels and the teaching staff within all of the programs. And then starting next week in earnest, give them more of that type of communication, that kind of back to school type communication. So certainly that will be, will be forthcoming. I would hope it's not in a big fell swoop that we're consistent with it, that we keep it going, but I think in earnest next week, that'll be coming.
And will they be hearing it from the district at large or will, can they start to expect to hear more from like their individual school?
So I would say both, but I think when there's questions, they should go to their individual school to get their, their questions. And if our principals and other people in the schools need some help with that, we're certainly going to provide that, all the information for them. But we really want to make sure that they can communicate with those closest to their, to their kids, whether it's the teacher or the principal in the building.
Okay, thanks. Next question, it is for you. Substitutes have always been a challenge. I forwarded something to Dr. Erdel yesterday, Saturday, I don't remember when. Have we thought about creative planning for how we bring folks in to substitute through any, like are there waivers? Like, again, I'm thinking more like Sean, like how do we prepare for the fact that, I'm guessing that when a teacher gets quarantined because a kid's coughing and it's not COVID, but they're still out, you know what I mean, for a while? How are we going to cover so that we don't have to close school because of quarantined teachers?
So we are planning, it's kind of twofold, one of which we have posted all building subs so that we can have that flexibility within a building sub to do some coverage there. We're doing, we have done some creative planning with the building leaders to look at their staffing and how do we spend support and looking at like a flow chart of planning if staff is down to make sure we're supervising and making sure that there's a rotation in place so that we can have that in place. We're going, we are doing some heavy recruiting during this time. You'll start to see that in family newsletters, community newsletters to recruit day-to-day subs. One of the pieces that we'll be communicating that out is that we're going to offer free lunches to all of our subs that are buildings. We have increased our, we propose to increase our daily sub rates. And we kind of have a chart based on the number of service. We also have a bonus structure to really increase the number of fill rates that we have in place. And we know substitutes is definitely something that's constantly on my mind.
This is not new, it's not COVID.
Right. So we're really trying to do our best to be creative around that and, and see what we can do to supplement our current sub pool.
And the other piece, we're going to look at technology. So we do have a couple of, we've gotten a couple of the, Jamie would probably know the technical term, but there are cameras, there are 360 cameras with good microphone systems that would be set on a tripod in a classroom.
Like a swivel?
Yeah, so that would be a way to communicate for, if a teacher is, is quarantined or if students are quarantined but not sick and able to either learn or teach.
Yep.
That it can be done remotely as well with, with another person that might not be a certified teacher in the classroom. So we're going to, we're going to look at every way possible to make this, make it work out. Hopefully, we don't have those situations, but we need to prepare for those if they do occur.
Great. And the last thing is actually just a comment, and Sean, it's in response to you. And, and I am not, I don't want to give you a hard time, but I've, I've heard the same question too from parents about like, why are teachers not teaching five days if it's virtual? Like at work, I can do X, Y, and Z and I can Zoom for eight hours a day. I don't think we want to underestimate just how much work goes into good instruction and how much more complex it becomes when done virtually. And I just want to encourage families in the spring, when families were all teachers are the best, how can we thank them enough for doing all this work? Let's make sure that we continue to lift up the incredible professionals we have. And actually, one day to do planning and prep and good instructional work to make sure that the other four days are great is well worth it in my book. I do know that many families had some frustrations with the spring virtual and not feeling like it was rigorous. and not feeling like it was rigorous, but I want to make sure we're giving our, our teachers the benefit of the doubt for just how great this fall can be. And as a former teacher, I have to say, people have felt my frustration when I've been asked that question because unless you have been a teacher before, you cannot underestimate how much time and energy and effort goes into planning. It is not just about delivery. So I, I fully support the full day or the four day, and I hope the teachers feel supported in knowing that, that we believe that that's important.
Other board member comments or questions?
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciated all of the director presentations and Dr. Erdl. Very well organized. It was nice to hear the progress being made. I do have some questions on the number of families that we've heard from. I think, Dr. Erdl, you said 5,800?
5,935 as we sit here right now.
Okay, excellent. So it seems as though we're getting 25% other types of instruction, whatever that is, right? Which then would mean...
Virtual or Tulsa Connected or WV.
Correct. So that's kind of the number we're working at as far as staffing then and students in the classroom.
All things considered, we'll see how many we get by tomorrow, but if we, with 7,400 students, so we're going to be around 20% would be, I think it'll be 20%. So we can, we can gear toward, we're going to gear toward actual numbers for Tulsa Connect and for WVA and start that scheduling process. And everybody else will be in the phase into learning, we'll begin that process.
So we could, we could see 80%, right, of in, in hybrid? Is that right? Does that make sense?
That would be my estimate based on the information that we have right now.
Okay. So instead of, I just don't want to lose any families, any children in this time, and I don't want to lose any staff members. So I just want us to think a little more outside the box policymaking, possibly this board, on how we can do a better job with the adults. Because it, it is a, it is a difficult time. And if we are asking staff members to, I believe they're the frontline essential workers, just like healthcare workers and all of you in the room today. It's amazing what you're doing. I just want to recognize them. I, I just know how important this is to the students and the families in our district. I don't know what that looks like, but I wouldn't want anyone to leave and go anywhere else if we could do something to help and, and be creative along those lines. So I know things are in flux and, and we're going to hear more. And I guess from my perspective with the, the medical panel, there's just so much information, Mr. Domann and, and whoever else is Dr. Erdl. I mean, it's just, I mean, it's going to be a lot to bring forward. So I appreciate you, you know, trying to collect the information. But, but yeah, I mean, we have to be prepared for everything. So when can we talk as a board about this staffing piece possibly and this additional budgeting piece, which we know we're going to have to rearrange some things and prioritize? When, when can we do that?
Well, we're going to be, we're going to be bringing recommendations for hiring to the board probably at the next meeting starting. And we'll give some estimates of what the total costs are going to be. I said when we started down this path, this is going to be a hit on our fund balance. And that's really what it's, how I look at it and say, we're going to, we're going to spend a lot more money this year than we have in the past. Whether or not there's going to be reimbursement coming from the state or federal level, I don't think we can plan on that. I think we have to plan on, I mean, providing the best education we can with best teachers. So I think at our next meeting, I can certainly be prepared to share more information about budget and staffing.
Well, and also I have been getting a lot of questions about the educational program itself and what parents can expect. And, and again, this is in flux and is frustrating. But I know that we're doing what we can to offer the children in the timeframe, they can be attentive to those classes in a safe manner in the buildings. And I, I just, I hope that to stick with us, I hate to coin a phrase or anything, but I really hope you do. Because I think Wauwautosa is doing something that no other school district in southeastern Wisconsin is out there doing. And, and it's just important for the kids to be together. I'm hearing from people even outside of our community that children are afraid, they're afraid of each other, they're afraid, they're fearful because this is their new environment, especially small children. And, you know, having them in school, having safe places and people to be around, even if we are all in PPE, I think if we can do this safely, it's worth it for them.
Dr. Joseph Banger, may I speak?
Sir.
I, I'm going to speak to some things that Mrs. Fraley said. And I'm agreeing with her, and I don't want to cast my pessimism over what she said. So I'm a born pessimist, and I'm always one looking for how things can fail. So everyone, please understand that. That's kind of the role I take in life. Please, everyone understand that on a normal day in a normal year, teaching is a hard job. It's a hard job to do. And yes, the teachers, I believe, are, are well compensated, well paid, good benefits. It's a good job and it's a hard job. And that's without COVID-19. And to layer all of these processes and procedures and physical things and mental things onto the teaching staff and the administrators and the roles that have been taken on by the entire organization, it is a Herculean task that they are taking on. And I totally get and I totally understand, and I believe that everybody who sees a problem or a gap or a need, please let us know. But we won't be able to fill every gap need and want. And the staff will need slack, some fluffy, you know, the fifth day that would, to recover and, and get their bearings and plans for the next week. You know, that's specifically what the staff needs, I don't know, I'm not an educator. But I completely believe that we cannot approach this with a theory that we're going to 100% tax people's, you know, put burden on people's times. People are going to need some gaps just to catch their breath. And the students as well, you know, this is a big thing, right? I, I mean, obviously. So when the day comes for the final vote, I, you know, I might be a no vote, but it's not because I don't believe in our organization. I don't want to say anything negative now to discourage people. I just want to say thank you, everybody. This is like a massive job you're taking on. So thank you.
Any final board questions or comments? I would just echo the thank you. Lots of great work being done. Special thank you to Mr. Domann, who after our last board meeting raised his hand and emailed me and said, hey, I'll take on sitting on the medical advisory group if you'd like. Appreciate that very much. And to all the members of the community who stepped up for that group, who have been good buys and further strengthen our operational plan and guide us through this process. The public health professionals in that group, the medical professionals, the mental health professionals, thank you. We are the only ones that I'm aware of in the country who have assembled this type of community group, many of whom, maybe all of whom who have children in the schools or went through the schools here in Wauwautosa. So incredibly indebted to, to the staff and to the additional members of the community who volunteered. Many thanks for that. Jamie, I'm going to guess we probably have some community comment and feedback on this?
There are no hands raised right now.
I feel like you're punking me right now.
Actually, we just had, just had to. So...
Like you're lying to me. It can't be, that can't be the case.
Can't be that easy, right? Apele, A-P-A-L-E, you have the microphone. You will need to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Hi, everybody. No, I won't disappoint you. I raised my hand. It's Deb Falek. So at the July 27th board meeting, you heard from a number of families of students with disabilities in the district. And this past Thursday on August 6th, the document was sent out to families who have children with disabilities outlining the different services available within the options. One thing that I wanted to bring up particularly for the medical advisory team is that some families have been offered a plan if they choose the phase into learning, that their child will be assigned, of course, a cohort, just like all other kids. But then they can also come in on the other two days. So if your child is assigned Cohort A, you can come in on Cohort B for certain classes. So I am wondering if the medical advisory team has had a chance to review that plan and if they could share an opinion with families so families can make a better choice and decision about your child being in school with both cohorts. This was, so that's one question. This was not something I am interested in, but something certainly I, I heard about through families over the weekend. And I may have the wrong term, but if there could be information shared about the voucher programs or something that allows students with disabilities to attend other schools. I, I don't know a lot about that, but I'm just forwarding that, that on. Lastly, I want to really thank those people who raised awareness about the, what was in the reopening plan FAQ under the student specials, special education section. That was a pretty biased statement and fairly offensive. And also thank you to those in the district who realized that that shouldn't be on there and removed it. I really want to encourage us that we have to ensure we're not feeding into stereotypes about people with disabilities and we're not stigmatizing our, our students with disabilities. So as we plan for this and the social emotional learning, and if people don't understand why what was shared on the district's website is offensive to people with disabilities, you know, again, we may need to have deeper conversations on these sorts of things. So thank you so much.
We did have one other attendee with their hand raised. Oh, she's just done it again. There we go. Jen Janowski.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? Okay. Deb and I share many of the same thoughts around this. My comments are again around kids with disabilities and those students with IEPs. I attended the last board meeting. I too received messages and I felt very disappointed with the lack of information that was provided to the parents of children with disabilities in that we weren't really provided with information. We were given a choice, but not enough information to make it, make, make a proper choice. I can't make a choice for my son who has a disability without knowing what kind of supports he's going to get. So I'm forced to make a choice with no information. And I, I think, I, I heard you, Mr. Meyer, that we're going to miss some things, but we can't miss, we can't miss our children with IEPs, our children with disabilities. It's too important. There's too many of us. And I mean, we have, we have an obligation to do better than this. And I, I'm just really disappointed. I, I will have to say that with the lack of acknowledgement from the board and the response here. And here we are in a second meeting where it's not been proactively raised. And I, as a parent, I have three kids in the district, two are typical, one has a disability. I'm just left feeling very, very disappointed.
Okay, we have no further hands raised. Yep, no more hands raised.
Thank you both for your comments. Any final board questions or comments? Thank you all, the district team for putting this together. Two weeks, I believe, medical advisory panel will be joining us and making a recommendation for the phase into learning group of what their recommendation will be for how we will be starting the school year. So more to come in two weeks on that item. Next up on our agenda is the Legislative Advocacy Committee update. Sean and Leanne?
We don't have an update at this time.
Any final public comments on non-agenda items?
There are no hands raised.
Seeing none, it is 8:53 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Domann, Mr. Fraley. Ms. Newman, please call the room.
Mr. Domann?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Muval?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Rollin?
Yes.
Dr. Joseph Banger?
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all, and we'll see you in two weeks.